Good evening. Thank you all for coming and welcome back after our little summer break. We will get the meeting started. Madam Clerk, please read the adequate notice compliance statement.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk’s Office in the preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 15, 2022, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room.
Thank you very much. And let’s have a roll call, please.
Ms. Allen here. Ms. Fox?
Here.
Ms. Hairston?
Here.
Ms. Hamlet?
Here.
Dr. Levine?
Here.
Mr. Miniger?
Here.
President Vorten.
Present. All right. We’ll have the pledge of allegiance, and I’ll ask our first aid squad members to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please read the explanatory notes regarding closed session and hearings and comments.
A closed session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give her email a copy to the City Clerk’s Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using electronic device to follow the meeting agenda, or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next up is approval of the minutes from the regular enclosed session on July 18th. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and the minutes are approved. Thank you. On to reports. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Welcome back from the summer. I have two short, relatively short announcements. First is an update on the homeless population in our community. As we’re all aware, homelessness is a complicated issue that we are trying to work on with compassion and expediency, with the ultimate goal being to help people in need to find housing. There is a full update on the city website, but for the purposes of this meeting, I will summarize. We are approaching the way we help, we give help in two ways. First, we are currently working with the Union County Department of Community Affairs, the State Department of Community Affairs, Bridges Outreach, and the Summit Housing Authority to obtain housing vouchers. This is a very complicated and long process, but I believe our voices are being heard, and progress will follow. I’ve been publicly accused of trying to create a sanctuary city, and I want to assure you that is absolutely not the case. We are also committed to having the bus shelters return to functioning as bus shelters. To that end, the city has turned off the electricity in the units, as electricity is not working on most New Jersey Transit bus stops. And we have removed the chairs, because under current municipal ordinance, the chairs impede the use of public space. I am also in discussion with our DPW to resume cleanings and hope that it can be done weekly. None of these actions are intended to further exacerbate the hardships of our fellow citizens. We are committed to providing adequate housing, food, and services for those in need in conjunction with organizations that are existing in our community. Another serious issue is motor vehicle thefts and residential burglaries. We heard from Chief Zagorski in July on the topic of motor vehicle theft, attempted theft, and residential burglaries. I would like to add to his update and say that thankfully, we are still on course to have 50% fewer motor vehicle thefts in 2023, with nine stolen so far this year. This is due to vigilance from the community, and I thank you for securing your vehicles and homes, as well as increased police patrols and a different approach to policing our various neighborhoods. Residential burglaries have increased in 2023, with 15 successful and six unsuccessful attempts so far this year, and a total of 20 in 2022. Two successful and two unsuccessful attempts were tied to the car theft rings with suspects entering homes to look for key fobs. Two weeks ago, I joined mayors and police chiefs from five other municipalities and met with the Union County Prosecutor’s Office to discuss reforming bail reform laws. Our concerns were heard, and our coalition will continue to work with the prosecutor’s office to ensure necessary changes are made. I will share more information on our efforts as progress is made. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and welcome back to our city administrator, Michael Rogers, and happy birthday to you as well, sir.
Thank you.
We’ll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Council President. Good to be back and great to see familiar faces in the audience. I’ll just give a brief report on some things. The City of Summit is holding a memorial observance for the 22nd anniversary of the 9/11 terrorist attacks on Monday, September 11 at 9:45 a.m. at the Summit Fire Department across the street. All members of the community are invited to attend. Recycling Collection is operating on a modified schedule for the week of Monday, September 4 through Friday, September 8. Since there was no recycling pickup on Monday, September 4, all collections move forward one day. Monday collection moved to Tuesday, September 5, and so forth. Friday will be on Saturday, September 9. Recycling items should be placed at the curb by 6 a.m. the morning the residents pick up. Summit residents should use the See Click Fix app or the Report a Concern module on the city website homepage to report missed pickups. The Summit Free Market will be open next weekend on Saturday, September 9, from 8 a.m. to 3 p.m. at the transfer station. Residents must have a permit to access the transfer station to attend. Permits must be purchased online through the City of Summit Parking Services Agency at cityofsummit.org/parking. And finally, important back-to-school safety tips for motorists and pedestrians from the Summit Police Department are available on the city website, cityofsummit.org/polic. And that is all I have. Council President, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Michael. Moving on to my report, I’ll just start by saying I think there are probably some people still around town with their power out. That was a little touch-and-go for us on whether we were going to have this council meeting, but I’m glad that we’re here. And thank you to all the municipal staff and our first aid squad and our emergency responders who are out responding to that as it’s going on. Let’s start with my, I just want to update the community on where we are briefly on the commitments that we made at the beginning of the year. And I have a visual component to that, so let’s go to the next slide. Oh, I can do it. You gave me the thing.
There you go.
All right. There we go. Okay. So, work that the council is going to do this year, this is very similar to the update I gave in April, but also based on the goals and priorities that I outlined at the council meeting, at the very first council meeting at the beginning of the year in January. So, work will fall within the following three buckets. First, ensure and enhance health and safety. Second, responsibly manage fiscal resources. And third, pursue the goals set forth in the master plan. Yep. Back line. There we go. Okay. So, these were the specific goals that we spoke about, which was continue to address vehicle thefts. Thank you for the update on that, Mayor. Improve pedestrian and traffic safety. Ensure utility companies complete paving work. Assist the unhoused population. Thank you also for that update, Mayor. Adopt a responsible budget. Reach decisions about Broad Street West redevelopment and Maple Street. Open the dog park at the transfer station. Initiate a plan for rehabilitation of playgrounds. Continue the construction of the Summit Park Line. Support and construct affordable housing. And what we did not know in January was that we would need to determine next steps for our emergency communications as New Providence voted to leave our agreement. So, on the pedestrian and vehicle safety front, flashing beacons have been installed at Ashwood Avenue and Baltis Roll Road and Bryant Parkway and Orchard Street. More locations are coming soon, including Springfield Ave and Pine Grove, that’s supposed to be Pine Grove, not High Street, that’s my mistake, and also Ashwood, Pearl, and Michigan, which is another very good one. There is a one-way trial going on on Bryant Parkway. So far, I think it’s been going really well. And I think after having started school, hopefully we’ll get some other updates now that traffic’s back, I think, to a little bit more normal. Also, sidewalks and other road projects. This is not inclusive at all, but some of the big ones. Prospect Street sidewalks are set to begin soon. Hobart Project is set to begin soon. We received a $1 million grant for Canoe Brook Parkway. That’s excellent. The projects to improve Pine Grove, Butler Parkway, West End Ave, Beacon Road, Park Ave, and Tulip Street are all complete. And so is micropaving of a dozen, actually 12 streets throughout town. The full project list of what’s been completed and what is up next is also on the city website. So that’s good. The other big thing, I’m just going to pull out a few of these. I’m not going all the way through all the things I mentioned. But ensure utilities repair roads when work is complete. So, we had reps from PSE&amp;G present to us in March. We also had New Jersey American Water present in May. Summit Ave and Morris Ave are complete. That’s long overdue. That’s excellent. Many other streets are complete and repairs continue. I was actually very surprised at the speed with which they moved through the downtown. So, that, I think, was really good. And now we’re at a spot where I think that those trenches are settling, and they do need to come back through and pave that stuff as well. We have information to the Engineering and Communications Office on the work schedule, and that continues to be communicated out through our channels. And paving happens 60 to 90 days after the work is complete to allow that road to settle. The next thing, which I think is a topic of interest, is determine the path forward for Broad Street West redevelopment. So, those that were not paying attention at the beginning of the summer, our conditional designation with the developers was removed at the July 5 council meeting. Council made this decision as I communicated at the time, because economics have changed, area in which to build has changed, and the Summit community’s support has changed. There was, in our determination as a governing body, no viable path to a redevelopment agreement. So, the repeal of the Broad Street West redevelopment plan as an ordinance is being introduced later this evening. And that is the update on that. And finally, just a couple quick notes about fun stuff, good stuff. Open the dog park at the transfer station. The plan is to have that open this fall. The fence is the next step. We adopted a resolution to name the dog park after our former colleague, Matt Gould. And on the playground replacement front, playground plan was received by the engineering consultant. Costs for this stuff was crazy. Community Programs and Parking Services Committee, along with the Department of Community Programs Advisory Committee, is working to reduce costs, add value, make a fundraising plan, and I think we’ll have an update about that pretty soon as well. The priority here is maybe playground, as that investment is in our capital budget, and it is the most centrally located part. Thank you. So that’s it for that piece, the visual aid part. This is the Honorable Council President Pro Tem Susan Hairston’s final meeting. While I am saddened to lose her wisdom and leadership on council, I’m excited for her journey into a new chapter of growth and professional development. She has received the honor of being selected as part of the inaugural class of an Executive Leadership Fellowship at the University of Chicago called the Leadership and Society Initiative.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have more to say. You want to clap more later. Susan’s roots in Summit run very deep, and her legacy of service is ingrained in the very fabric of our community. As a volunteer, she led the Board of Education as president, served on the Union County Tax Board, the Board of Union College, and has been a tireless champion for the citizens of Summit. Susan has demonstrated what it means to serve others with compassion, empathy, and integrity. And as we bid Susan farewell, let’s take a moment to celebrate her many achievements, to express our profound gratitude for her service. Susan, we salute you not just for what you have done, but for how you have done it, with passion and steadfast dedication to the people of this wonderful community. Thank you. Finally, I want to talk about elections. I’ve run in three elections in this community. I’ve won and I’ve lost. As we reach the height of election season, I want to say three things about this to the whole community. First, a reminder to candidates that if you have a question or a concern about something, or if you hear a question or a concern from neighbors, the very best way to get that addressed is to email, call, or otherwise get in touch with current members of council or the mayor. We will direct your inquiry to the appropriate member of city staff or the most relevant council committee. Second, the core purpose of council meetings is to conduct the critically important business of making the city and our municipal services run. I implore the community to please check partisan politics and campaign activities at the door. And third, in the last few years, the Summit community learned that we are not immune from becoming extremely angry, hurling accusations, and assuming the worst of intentions about one another. As neighbors, I believe all of us deserve more grace and respect from one another. Whether we’re in this room, out in the community, or on social media, we must remember the power of our voice. We all have to choose whether to put each other down or lift each other up. In closing, I firmly believe we have the capacity to do great things, and I hope we can see this election as an exercise in possibility. To those who engage respectfully, understand the power of our voice and the value of our vote, I thank you in advance for your participation. Thank you. So, we are moving on to a resolution and then a ceremonial award. So we’re going to do the resolution first and then the awards from the mayor. So I will turn it over to Councilwoman Allen.
Thank you, Council President. So, on behalf of the council, I’d like to introduce resolution number, ID number 10591, that recognizes and celebrates Wallace Chapel AME Zion Church’s 100-year celebration. In the summer of 1923, Miss Edney, and I hope I said that right, gathered a small group of 35 people to organize a Methodist church, and with the help of Reverend Carruthers and two other ministers, to organize Wallace Chapel AME Zion Church on June 29, 1923. Since October 1, 1989, Reverend Dr. Dennison Harriel has continued the legacy of Wallace Chapel. Reverend Harriel and Wallace Chapel Church are both landmarks in our community. Reverend Harriel, as an engaging and active community leader, and Wallace Chapel Church as a nationally recognized historical place. Together, they have made the lives of their congregation and the wider community a richer and welcoming community to live in. Reverend Harriel, I want to personally thank you for spending time with me this summer to talk about your church, and I understand that COVID has had a significant impact on your participation. And I’m hoping that this 100-year celebration, which is truly amazing in an area where churches struggle, 100 years is an amazing landmark, and I’m hoping that this year is your year of growth. Your gentle spirit, your honest approach, and your humble nature is inspiring to me, and it is a great light in the world. In a chaotic era, you exude forgiveness, thoughtfulness, and respect, which is an inspiration to me and hopefully all those around you. I’d like to wish you luck on September 10 at 11 o’clock at your service. I know it’s going to be an enormous success. I move to move this resolution.
And do we have a second?
I have a second.
Excellent. Any comments from members of council? No?
I left them speechless.
I would just like to say, Lisa, thank you for doing that. And it’s a special day. I can’t wait to attend, and we’re just so proud of all you do for the community. And we’ll continue to support you in any way. Everybody share the GoFundMe that’s going around and see how much money we can raise for all the great things that you do.
Thank you, Susan.
Council President, this really touches my heart, because my grandparents were members of Wallace Chapel. My dad was a member of Wallace Chapel. Esther Tony was a member of Wallace Chapel. And so, my personal pride and joy about this momentous occasion, I can’t express how happy I am that the church is celebrating this anniversary and that we, as council, get to be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I’ll just wrap up council, I’ll just wrap up council comments by saying congratulations to Reverend Harriel and the entire Wallace Chapel congregation. I look forward to worshiping with you this weekend as well. Okay, I think we’re ready for a vote on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you, sir. And now we’re moving on to a similar proclamation.
You’re going to present the...
Oh, okay. There’s a resolution there for them, too.
There’s two frames.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, good. Sorry.
Yeah. Good evening. So, it’s a little, little bit redundant, but that’s all right. This is to honor, recognize, and celebrate the 100th anniversary of Wallace Chapel AME Zion Church. Whereas June 29, 2023 marked the 100th anniversary of Wallace Chapel AME Zion Church in Summit, and whereas the Summit Common Council wishes to recognize and honor Wallace Chapel for its rich history and strong foundation in the City of Summit, which began with Adelaide Edney, wife of the late J.C. Edney, an AME Zion minister who built several AME Zion churches in North Carolina, and she longed for a church of her choice in Summit. And whereas, as Councilwoman Allen said, she, in the summer of 1923, she succeeded in getting a small group of 35 to organize a Methodist church. Whereas on Sunday, May 17, 1925, Reverend Florence Randolph, for the first time his pastor, met the Wallace Chapel congregation. She preached her first sermon, selecting as her subject Nehemiah 4:6, “For the people had a mind to work.” And whereas Wallace Chapel AME Zion Church continues its legacy under its current pastor, Reverend Dr. Dennison Harriel Jr., since October 1, 1989, who has been a strong and active community leader in the City of Summit. And whereas Wallace Chapel AME Zion Church was listed on the New Jersey and National Registers of Historic Places in 2007, and in 2008, the General Conference of the AME Zion Church designated Wallace Chapel as an historical landmark of the AME Zion Church. Now therefore be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Summit in New Jersey, that it does hereby recognize and honor Wallace Chapel on the occasion of its 100th anniversary, that it calls upon all citizens in the City of Summit to join Summit Common Council in celebrating this historic milestone dated September 5, 2023. And Rose Marie says, I Rosalia, Lickettie, City Clerk of the City of Summit, do hereby certify that the foregoing resolution was adopted by the Common Council of said city at a regular meeting held on Tuesday evening, September 5, 2023.
There’s more.
This is a proclamation from the office of the mayor. And I’m not going to read everything all over.
Please, sir.
Okay. Okay, so we’ve established that it was started in 1923. In May 201925, Reverend Randolph was appointed the temporary pastor. Whereas the first drive for a church building was launched in the fall of 1926, and the house and land on the corner of Broad and Orchard Streets was purchased in 1928. And whereas the congregation raised the money to build a new church, contributed much of the furniture and beautiful windows you see there today. And whereas Wallace Chapel AME Zion Church has been designated a state and national historic site. And whereas, it’s not only a historic designation within the City of Summit, but also recognized as a historic landmark by the 48 quadrennial session of the General Conference of the AME Zion Church in Atlanta, Georgia. Whereas AME Zion Church is described as one of Summit’s treasures, and whereas Wallace Chapel has been valued, has been a valued presence within the City of Summit for 100 years, and continues to be a beacon of light, faith, hope, love, praise, comfort, worship, fellowship, service, and outreach. Now therefore, I Nora Radus, Mayor of the City of Summit, do hereby proclaim September 10, 2023, as Wallace Chapel AME Zion Church 100th Anniversary Celebration in the City of Summit, and I ask all citizens to join me in supporting and celebrating this monumentally historic event. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed as of September 10 in the year 2023. Thank you. And may I just add one thing. I’ve had the great pleasure of knowing Reverend Harriel for many years and his lovely wife, without whom all this success would not be possible. You know what they say, behind every successful man is an important woman. So, thank you, and I look forward to being with you all on Sunday. Yes, you may.
Which way should I turn? This way? Either way?
That’s fine.
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank God for the opportunity that He has given me and He has given the church to witness this momentous occasion. I also want to thank the mayor and the common council for recognizing Wallace Chapel and presenting this resolution and proclamation. I want to thank the members of Wallace Chapel who are here tonight in support of their pastor, and also in recognition of the blessings of God that we’ve come this far by faith. So, behind me, this congregation has been very loving and supportive, and I thank you all for being here. I don’t want you to think that those of you, those that you see, we do have more members than that, okay? I want to also invite all of you, those watching on television and those in the audience, you’re welcome to join us at 11 a.m. on Sunday, September 10 for worship and celebration. I can assure you, you will not leave the way that you came. It will be an enjoyable, uplifting service, and feel free to come. Also, I know the mayor has been to the church, some of the city council people have been, but there are five sites on the National Historic Register that Summit has. The first one is the Alberitum in 1983, Twin Maples in 1997, Wallace Chapel in 2007, the Summit Playhouse in 2009, and the Summit Historic Business District in 2011. Now, I’m challenging the members of city council who have not been to all of those sites to please do that, but particularly, nothing will be complete until you visit Wallace Chapel on Sunday. So if you’ve been to the others, you still are missing one, and that’s Wallace Chapel. So come and share with us. I also want to thank Councilwoman Lisa Allen. I have been the pastor of Wallace Chapel for one-third, 34 years of the 100 years. So I can understand clearly why you refer to the church as a landmark, but why you also refer to the pastor as a landmark. Thank you so very much. But this has been a great movement from, when I look back and study the history of the church, in these times, the second pastor of the church, Reverend Dr. Florence Randolph, for which the church is... for which the church is recognized as a historic, on the Historic Register. She made, she had pastored a few churches before becoming the second pastor of Wallace Chapel. And each time, the bishop would appoint her to a struggling church. Because at that time, there were very, if any, women in the pastoral ministry in the Methodist denomination. So she would go there until, and the bishop would not say it publicly, but he would tell some of his colleagues, she will only be there until I can find a young man to replace her. So she came to Wallace Chapel in 1925. And she came with the dedication and commitment to move forward and to build a church. The present edifice is what she led the people in building. She's remained there while they, I guess, were still looking for a young man for 21 years. And I stand on her shoulders and the shoulders of many others. But particularly, I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve this community, rich in its history, but also pregnant with opportunities to do even more. So thank you, mayor. Thank you, city council. Thank Wallace Chapel. Thank all of you. And my motto is, I still have a charge to keep, and I still have people to serve. And as long, even though I'm getting younger, but my mind is still sharp, even though my legs are not as strong. Thank you so very much. God bless you.
All right. Thank you, Reverend. And we have another proclamation from the mayor.
This is a proclamation for, to the rescue squad, so the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad. John, you want to come up? And anyone else of your group who wants to join us? Whereas health and safety are paramount to a sound community. And whereas since July 28, 1962, the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members have provided a vital public service to our community in support of safety and health. And whereas the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members have given an untold number of hours to service to Summit residents and patrons of our businesses and medical institutions. And whereas the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad answered more than 2,300 emergency calls for help last year from Summit residents, visitors, and from surrounding communities in need of mutual aid and support. And whereas Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members have responded to emergencies of all types at all hours of the day and the night. Whereas in addition to 911 emergency calls, Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members regularly provide non-emergency coverage at many community events. Whereas the efforts of the Volunteer First Aid Squad members, all of whom are volunteers, should not go unrecognized. And whereas the dedication and hard work of the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members provides quality care at no cost to the patient or taxpayer, saving the city of Summit approximately $2 million per year. Now therefore, I nor a radius, Mayor of the City of Summit, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2023 as Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad Month in the city of Summit and in recognition of the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad and the importance of all the good deeds contributed by its many volunteers for 61 years. And I ask all citizens to join me in praising these volunteers and lending the squad your financial support. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this fifth day of September in the year 2023. These guys do an amazing job, men and women. And I especially just want to thank them again for the unbelievable work that they did during the pandemic. They were nonstop, round the clock. And it was a scary time, but you were great. And you never, you made everybody feel safe. So I thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Oh, good.
Well, then, I'm going to say, it is a volunteer organization. They don't get any money from the city. So anybody who's listening out there, everyone here, please lend your support. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, mayor. We have a presentation from Ramon Runkilo from Spruce Technology, who's been working on the council chamber AV upgrades. Is he here?
He was here.
He was here. All right. Well, you saw the cool thing happen there with the screen chair. So that's something.
I'm sure he's just away for a moment. He'll be back.
All right, well, okay. Let's just get started, then, with other stuff. All right. So we've got a bunch of ordinances for introduction. So we're going to have our clerk read all of them first. I'm saying this out loud as a reminder to myself. And we will start with the first one. Please, Madam Clerk.
Okay. An ordinance of the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, repealing ordinance number 19-3188, adopting the Broad Street West Redevelopment Plan dated March 20, 2019, in accordance with the local redevelopment and housing law, NJSA 40A, colon, 12A, dash, one, et cec. There's Mr. Runkilo.
Okay, all right. So let's just do, let's just do this.
Let's just finish this one.
Let's just finish introducing this one. And then we'll, and then we'll turn over to Ramon for a second. Okay, I'm sorry. Were you, were you all set?
Yes.
Okay, so now, Councilwoman Levine.
Right.
Thank you, Council President. Ordinance number 10539 serves to repeal the Broad Street West Redevelopment Plan and the original ordinance adopting that Broad Street West Redevelopment Plan and to implement the zoning that was applicable to the property immediately prior to the adoption of this Broad Street West Redevelopment Plan. Currently, the redevelopment plan supersedes all previous zoning standards. So if this ordinance is enacted, the zoning will revert to its previous designation. Common Council does not believe it is in the best interest of the residents of this city to redevelop the property. Therefore, we are taking this action. Anytime there is a change in zoning, the planning board must review it to ensure it's not inconsistent with the master plan. The planning board meeting is scheduled for September 25. As such, the hearing for this ordinance I am moving to introduce will occur on October 3. I would please like to move this ordinance for introduction.
And I second it.
Okay. At this point, we will...
Ask for comments.
Comments from members of council.
Thank you, Councilwoman Levine. I'd like to say, excuse me, I think this is a great first step. Is my microphone working? Is it working?
Yeah, I think so.
I think this is a great first step. I would like to recommend that we work on drafting a resolution with guidance from professionals by the next meeting, which will remove the area in need of redevelopment. The residents of Summit understand all too well what happens when areas in need of redevelopment, capital R, under the LRHL are used. We only need to drive by the gargantuan Chatham River Road project or the gargantuan Milburn project or the gargantuan Westfield project. What they're all becoming overnight. The purpose of redevelopment under LRHL is that it puts the entire redevelopment process into the hands of city government, who must rely on expert consultants to guide them through the process. Normally, redevelopment with a small r takes place by experienced building professionals who must adhere to our zoning laws and be approved by our planning and zoning boards. This normal process takes place in a public forum where all of you, public citizens, can participate. Privately developed buildings, projects that have come online in Summit recently and in the past are admired by residents as good design that is keeping, in keeping with Summit's character and scale. And they've sold like hotcakes, and the developers have made money. They have also included affordable housing. These are required by our zoning code. Keeping the area in need of redevelopment in place is a complete contradiction to the public promise that redevelopment under LRHL would not take place. We have come to the conclusion that redevelopment with a capital R is not right for Summit. Repealing the area in need of redevelopment is that next step. So thank you, Councilwoman Levine, for, this is probably one of the most exciting ordinances that you can introduce. I think we have some work to do here, and I would think some of my colleagues might agree. So thank you.
I'd like to thank you, Councilwoman Hamlet, and thank you, Councilwoman Levine, for introducing this. I think this has been an incredibly difficult 18 months. And I agree, the repeal of the Broad Street West Redevelopment Plan is a great step in the right direction. And we do need to consider the area in need of redevelopment to be repealed also in my, whether we deliberate at it, about it, however that happens, I think that is the next best step to build our trust back and to make sure that we build something, that something appropriate gets built there. So I'm really appreciative of this tonight. And I think, I hope that we will have a lot more conversations to come.
Okay. Other comments?
Council President, since this is my last meeting, I know normally we don't discuss ordinances before a hearing. But I want to say that while the council heard loud and clear the community, that there are many in this community who still stand behind redeveloping this town in a meaningful way. And I will want to encourage the community to come out and be a part of this in a not silent way, but to support what is happening in this town to make sure that we are inclusive and that we are thinking about the whole of Summit. And so I just thank you for the opportunity to speak, Council President.
Sure. Anybody else? Okay. I think we'll take a vote on that. This is a... Do we do roll call vote on this?
No public comment.
No public comments until the hearings. Roll call, please. Yes, thank you.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
President Vartan?
Aye. All right. The motion carries.
Council President, there was a question about when the hearing is. Can you just...
The hearing, so as expertly explained by Councilwoman Levine, this is going to be referred to the planning board. They will have their next regularly scheduled meeting in September, September 25. And then we will have our hearing on this ordinance on the 3rd, assuming they find...
They provide their input.
They provide their input that, yes. Okay. And there's a public hearing on that at the planning board meeting. There's a public hearing on it at our council meeting on the 3rd, to be clear. Okay. Let's give Ramon the opportunity to do his presentation.
Come on up, Ramon.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Am I just going overall on the system? Is that what I'm doing, or?
As briefly as you can.
As briefly as you can, okay.
Please, yes.
Okay.
Got a lot of other stuff going on.
The city of Summit recently upgraded their audiovisual system. And we were able to salvage a lot of the original equipment that they have. That is the cameras, which is a lot of the more expensive stuff. Notice that we have sharing capabilities and things of that nature. We also integrated a hybrid Zoom connection for wireless capabilities, as well as brand-new microphones. There's independent control on all the mics. That wasn't available before. We have that now. Screen sharing capability, I believe you just used that before. We actually have more control on audio levels and more control on the inside of that booth where Jay is, and you can't see him through that door. But we were able to give the technicians a little bit more leverage on how these meetings get handled. I'm looking at the, I was looking at the stream outside. It sounds beautiful. It looks great. And that's pretty much it. You guys have a state-of-the-art system. It's completely expandable. Everything is routable. I was watching the show outside. That's why I couldn't hear you. And the YouTube stream is a little delayed from what I hear. So, yeah, so, but it looks, it looks great. It's functioning great. We just installed the assistive listening system for hearing impaired capabilities. That system went online today. And I'm very proud to be a part of the project.
We actually used the enhancement on the microphone as Reverend Harriel was speaking. I quickly texted Jay, and I said, can you make that louder? And he did, and it worked beautifully.
Ah, that's cool.
Yeah, there's independent control.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I assume you can lower it for when I'm screaming into the mic?
Yeah, there's independent control.
I like to keep people on their toes, though.
But I want to personally thank Ramon for all his hard work. He and AJ, they coordinated their efforts here. And Ramon did a Herculean job, you know, getting everything done. We did have some challenges with back orders on a lot of the materials, but it came through, and you did a marvelous job. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. One more note, we did lose power right before this meeting.
Yes, we did.
And we literally had 20 minutes of short off time, and none of the equipment went off. So I was happy to see that.
All right. Excellent.
Council President, I think we should also, sorry, we should also give Clerk Lickatis a hand.
Oh, yes. Quickly lower the volume when the clapping happens.
Thank you, Ramon.
Thank you, Ramon. Thank you, Rosie. Excellent. Excellent. Okay. We're getting back into our regular order here. We're moving on to the second ordinance for introduction from Capital Projects and Community Services. Madam Clerk, please read that.
An ordinance to amend the code Appendix A, Schedule of Fees, contained in the revised general ordinances of the city of Summit.
Okay. And Councilmember Levine?
Thank you, Council President. Ordinance number 10593 amends the schedule of fees for various permitting processes. The Department of Community Services has completed a comprehensive review of all fees associated with their permitting processes and compared them with neighboring municipalities. Some changes have been made as this section of the ordinance hadn't been reviewed in many years. And it was quite a significant undertaking, actually. Some examples of changes include establishment of a lead paint inspection fee, increase in cost of a permit for a swimming pool, clarification to the zoning permit fee. Those are just some of many examples.
I move to introduce this ordinance.
I second that.
Okay. Any comments, members of council, on this one? Nope. And we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
President Vartan?
Aye. Excellent. And that motion carries. And just a note that all the other ordinances that we're going to introduce have their hearing on the next council meeting, which is the 19th of September. Okay. On to the next one. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance granting renewal of the municipal consent to Comcast of New Jersey, LL, II, LLC, to construct, connect, operate, and maintain a cable television system in the city of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey.
Okay. And Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President. Introducing ID number 9805, an ordinance granting renewal of the municipal consent to Comcast of New Jersey to construct, connect, and operate and maintain a cable television system in the city of Summit, Union County, New Jersey. This ordinance, which took quite a while to bring to fruition, allows what could be thought of something as very mundane, but it is, allows the Comcast Television to broadcast our, our council meetings. And there was very much hard work done by our attorneys to make sure that we will have a high definition, have the option to have a high-definition channel on our cable station and in the future. And we will be having a hearing on this And we will be having a hearing on this on September 19th. And I move to have this ordinance in, in place.
Excellent. And do we have a second?
Yes, I second.
Okay. Comments from members of council? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
President Vartan?
Aye. Excellent. The motion carries. And on to the next one, please. Madam Clerk.
An ordinance amending the code Chapter 7 Traffic Section 7-8 Parking Subsection 7-8.6 All Night Parking Prohibited Except For Certain Municipal Streets With Multiple Dwelling Units Of 10 Or More Units And Subsection 7-25.4 Regulations.
Okay. And Councilmember Hamlet?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 10612. Purpose of this ordinance is to allow the residents of Bovar the ability to park on their street overnight, since there is no parking on the premises, as they do not have driveways in their, in their homes. The residents have been parking overnight in the Sampson Lot, and they were allowed to park on the street during COVID, which proved not to be a hindrance to the area. For clarification purposes, in the Central Retail Business District, those that live on the upper levels must park in the off-street municipal lots. The City of Summit does not allow overnight street parking within the central, I can't ever say it, Central Retail Business District. Therefore, after careful consideration and review by the city solicitor, we are requesting the residents of strictly the Bovar Avenue condo association be able to park on Bovar Avenue and Bovar Place overnight from the hours of 3:00 p.m. until 8:00 a.m., after prepaying the city the normal overnight parking permit fees each quarter. I move to introduce this ordinance.
And I second.
Okay. Comments from members of council? Yes?
All I want to say is, I think Director McNanny and Councilwoman Miniger and Councilwoman Hamlet did a great job on this. Typically, I'm a hard no on, on street parking, but I think everyone's done their due diligence and worked really hard with listening to the neighbors, so I'm looking forward to the hearing on this.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say something similar, that I'm excited to vote yes to introduce this ordinance and also looking forward to the hearing. Thank you.
Excellent. All right. Other comments? Nope. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
President Vartan?
Aye. Excellent. The motion carries. And on to the next one, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance amending the code Chapter 7 Traffic Section 7-8 Parking Subsection 7-8.5 Parking Time Limited, Limited On Certain Streets.
Okay. Councilmember Hamlet?
Yes. Well, before I do that, real quick, I just want to say hi to my Bovar residents who came to the meeting tonight. This is, sorry, this is ID number 10613. Through discussion with the same group of residents, Bovar Avenue condo association, to change the meters on the street so that residents can park on the street during the day if need be. Many times, those spaces are taken up by hospital employees or non-resident commuters. Atlantic Health Overlook Hospital recently built an employee parking garage on their campus, and employees from the hospital should no longer be parking up, in this location. To deter and non-resident commuters or hospital employees from parking on this, on Bovar Avenue and Bovar Place, we are recommending removing the meters and making a five-hour time limit on both streets. I will say, personally, having visited this specific area a lot of times, it's a really dangerous intersection. I think when I went there, geez, probably two or three months ago, there was a sign that was actually hit by a car. It's a very, very dangerous intersection, so I'm very excited to introduce this ordinance tonight.
Okay. Do we have a second?
And I second.
All right. Any comments from members of council? Roll call, please.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
President Vartan?
Aye. Excellent. The motion carries. On to the next one, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance amending the code Chapter 7 Traffic Section 7-8 Parking Subsection 7-8.5 Parking Time Limited On Certain Streets.
Councilmember Hamlet? Thank you.
Yes. Sorry. I apologize. I'm just looking at something to make sure it's right. This is from Walnut? So, this is going from 12 to 3, correct, Rita?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to double check. Okay. Okay. Apologize. I have so many tonight, I'm just trying to get organized. Okay. The meters on Bovar Avenue and Bovar Place have been 12-hour meters for a very long time. Through discussion with Bovar Avenue condo association to change the meters on the street so that residents can park on the street during the day if need be. Many times, similar, as we just mentioned, these spaces are taken up by the hospital, so we are looking to put a three-hour limit on these meters. I move to introduce this ordinance.
This one's Walnut, right?
Sorry, I'm sorry. Walnut, that's, yes. I'm sorry.
So, yeah, okay.
Yes. Yes, that's wrong. Yes, Walnut Street. I'm sorry. I'm looking at my notes, and I kind of copied and pasted from the last one. Do you want me to do it again?
No, no. I think we're okay. We know it's Walnut.
I can do it again.
We know it's Walnut Street that we're talking about.
Walnut Street, yes.
12, 12 hours to 3 hours on the meters.
Walnut Street, between Bovar Place and Broad Street to 3 hours, is this ordinance.
Excellent. Okay. Do we have a second?
I still second this one.
Okay. Any other, any other, any comments from members of council? Okay. We'll do a roll call vote on this one, please.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
President Vartan?
Aye. The motion carries. Thank you. And last ordinance for introduction.
An ordinance amending the code Chapter 7 Traffic Section 7-8 Parking Subsection 7-8.5 Parking Time Limited On Certain Streets.
Councilmember Hamlet?
Okay. This is ID number 10615. So, just to give everybody a visual of where this area is, this is right behind Calvary Church.
Sorry, go ahead. Sorry. Keep going. Sorry.
This area is right behind Calvary Church, and a lot of the, a lot of the schoolchildren and parents park there, so just to give everybody a visual of where this is. And then they go across the apartments to Lincoln Hubbard. I just wanted to explain to everybody where this is before I explain what we're doing there. And having had three kids at Lincoln Hubbard, I can tell you that this is a really exciting ordinance. This area was reviewed by the city engineer, our traffic department, and our director of parking services. They have identified that there are typically four, I would say even more, parked, four cars parking daily at the curb on Euclid without proper space markings on the street. The street is not lined properly, and with four spaces, if something, if someone is coming in westbound on Euclid, it forces them to oncoming traffic and is a blind bend. There's also a fire hydrant at this location and needs to be properly marked. And as I mentioned, so many parents are parking there to pick up their kids. Once the changes are complete, a letter will go to the superintendent of schools to be sent out to all the parents of Lincoln Hubbard. Parents will be instructed to park in the K lot and walk to drop off and pick up their children. And I would like to move this ordinance for introduction.
And I second.
Okay. Comments from members of council? And we'll do a roll call vote on this one, please.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
President Vartan?
Aye. And the motion carries. Okay. Excellent. We're moving on to resolutions, and we'll start off with a few from law and labor. Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President. I have the honor of introducing ID number 10644, which appoints the 2023 president pro tempore. And this was pending a closed session discussion to replace me. And, and so, this resolution, and I just, I am going to read it as it is written. The Honorable Councilmember Susan Hairston, me, has submitted her resignation as council member for Ward 1 effective tomorrow, September 6th. And whereas I currently serve as the council's president pro tempore, and due to my resignation, there is a new, there, we have to appoint a new successor to that position. So, therefore, it be resolved that effective tomorrow, we will have appointing a new president pro temp to fill this appointment. And so, I want to make sure I'm understanding what I'm doing now. It is to introduce this resolution to nominate someone else to be the president, my successor, the pro temp. And do I get to get the second first, or do I now get to nominate who will be?
You can make a nomination.
Okay. And so, I'd like to start the process by nominating the colleague to my right, Councilmember Andy Miniger, who has done a remarkable job at being thorough and efficient with introducing legislation and researching topics that really affect the City of Summit. He is a, a resource to everyone on this council, and I would like to nominate him as the pro temp.
Okay. I will second that, and I'll ask for any other nominations at this point. Okay. So, I'll just add my thanks to you again for the times that you stood in for me. I also want to clarify a few things about what's happening here related to Susan's exciting new opportunity and the process to replace her. So, this is the final year of Susan's term, and she had already announced earlier this year that she would not be seeking another term on council. The process to replace her is as follows. The Summit Democratic Party has 15 days from tomorrow to submit a list of three names to council for consideration. And then council has 20 days to choose a replacement. It is likely that we will receive the list and hope to make a decision so that we can take action and appoint that person by resolution at the next council meeting, September 19th. The person chosen to replace Susan will occupy the office for the two and a half months until the end of the year, and then the winner of the ongoing election in Ward 1 will be sworn in at the reorganization meeting in January. That person that is sworn in from now until the end of the year will have all the same committee and liaison assignments that Susan did, with the exception of the council president pro temp position. The selection of a new pro temp is what we're doing right now, and that person succeeds me as council president or the mayor in the event of our absence. Any other comments from members of council at this point?
So, I think I have to apologize to my council president and to you, because I, did I read this correctly by introducing? I didn't read that. Okay.
Yes. I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure everybody knew what was going on.
Okay.
Yes. With the other committee assignments and making sure we knew.
But I didn't ask for, we didn't get a second.
He did. He seconded.
Greg seconded.
I seconded.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yes. Okay. Let's vote now. Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Congratulations. Council President Pro Temp Miniger. Okay. On to the second one. Councilmember Hairston?
Okay. The second resolution that I'm introducing is one that I am most proud of for the time that I have been on council. This resolution, number ID 59, 10590, is to approve the implementation of an onboarding process, including a volunteer handbook and an online tutorial for newly appointed volunteers. And what this resolution is doing is putting into place an opportunity for all of the amazing volunteers in the City of Summit to have an understanding of your rights and responsibilities and this privilege that you serve. This is an opportunity for you to understand all of the many volunteers who are in place, but also those who are considering. It's an opportunity to learn how this amazing city works by the actions of the volunteers and, and allows you to understand all of the many facets that go along with it. And so, with that, I would like to offer that ID 10590 resolution be approved.
And do we have a second?
That would be?
I'm sorry. Second, I, I would like to second that, Susan. And thank you.
Excellent. Councilmember comments? Yes?
I want to thank you, Councilwoman Hairston. You worked on this endlessly in partnership with Clerk Lickatis. I mean, the two of you really went through numerous iterations, and I don't think the community will ever know how many handbooks you read across the state. But I think this is a great idea. It's going to also help build camaraderie, that people have a joint mission when they join our boards, that we're serious, and that we take the responsibilities of our community to heart. So, thank you for putting in this framework for everybody. It is a legacy.
And thank you for your, your help in that matter as well, but I really want to thank you for recognizing our clerk, who did an amazing job with Rutgers University in, in researching this. And I know most people don't care about process, just like with Ramon, who is up here, but it matters that this city is so well-run and, and that volunteers have the opportunity to bring forth their best. So, thank you, Councilmember Allen, for your support in that one.
Susan, I would like to say thank you for, and Rosie, your leadership on this. I can say, as a member of the Law and Labor Committee, I put no work into this, and I think that's sometimes just the way it works. You have so much going on your plate, so it's, it's nice when you have people taking the lead and can take ownership. I had nothing to do with it, and well done.
Thank you. Other comments from members of council? I'll just wrap the comments on council by saying thank you and congratulations. This is a wonderful, wonderful thing to be doing. Comments from members of the community? Nope. Okay. All those in favor? About this resolution? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Excellent. Thank you very much. And last one, Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you. Council President, I'm introducing ID number 10640 to grant a person-to-person liquor license transfer of OS Wine LLC to SM Wine Rack Inc., doing business as The Wine Rack. An application was submitted to complete in all respects the fee for the transfer of the license, and it was cost $198, and it has been received, and the license has been properly renewed, and it is transferring the Plenary Retail Distribution Liquor License to The Wine LLC on 490 Morris Avenue. Folks, if you haven't driven by Morris Avenue and see this lovely sign that is introducing this liquor store on the corner of Morris Avenue and Webster, am I saying that right? Webster? Yes, Webster. Avenue and Webster, am I saying that right? Webster, yes, Webster. And this resolution is transferring that license to those owners, and Plenary Retail Consumption License issued to The Wine LLC at 490 Morris Avenue. And I introduce this resolution to approve that transfer.
I second.
Okay, and comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on, we've got one resolution from Community Programs, Councilmember Hamlet.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution ID number 10610. This resolution will authorize the Board of Education has replaced their automated external defibrillators within their schools and have offered the DCP 10 AEDs to use at their facilities. All of these, all of these are well-maintained, and the batteries have been replaced within the last year. Since the Damar Hamlin football incident last year, getting the new AEDs and replacement supplies have been extremely difficult throughout the country. So, this is a really exciting resolution, and I move to adopt this resolution.
And I second. Okay, Councilmember Comments?
Actually, I do have one comment, but I was looking for the answer for the last two days, and I didn't find, so I'm just going to put it out there. There's lots of medical professionals, or maybe Dr. Levine. I know it says that we replace the batteries on these, but I was just wondering if someone can do some research regarding how we maintain compliance of these. Like, if they're 10 years old, do they need to be updated, or...we don't have to answer it now, but I just, I did have that question because, you know, they are, they are older, but I think they're fine. But I wasn't sure if, like, who checked on those within the city. I guess the same person that checks on the ones we have now?
Yeah, yes, and it's going to be, it's going to be a person who's going to make sure that the pads are not expired. It's going to be a person who makes sure...
Oh, yeah, you should know, you're the EMS.
Yeah, it's going to be a person who makes sure that the, that the batteries are all set and ready to go. And, 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 you know, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't want to check on them.
You could check on them. With that being said, we did, President Barton and I reached out also to Keith Kennard, who's in charge of the Housing Authority. We realized they did not have any, so we were hopefully be shuffling two of these at some point over there, which will be great as well.
Yes, very good idea, and as, and I also let the squad know that the Board of Ed is looking to get rid of some of these. So, there, there, if you're a nonprofit who needs an AED, the Board of Ed would be the place to go. So, thank you for that, and I'll just do my quick plug that everyone should really consider attending a CPR class. Seconds matter when someone is in cardiac arrest, as many saw on live TV last year. High-quality CPR, administered right away, along with access to an AED, can really be a lifesaving thing. Any other comments from members of council?
I'll comment, just because you mentioned me. All I know about this, Councilwoman Hamlet, is that any medical devices, especially lifesaving ones, are so heavily regulated, and so we could just hope that that, you know, those boxes were checked. But I think we can talk with the Board of Health, might be a good, a good resource for us, too, just to confirm, or speak to the manufacturer, of course, but...
Yeah.
I just want to say, that was a super creative idea. Great job.
Yeah, and thanks to Derek Jess at the Board of Ed, I think, who called Mark, and that's how the whole thing sort of got rolling. So, thank you. All right, comments from members of the public? Nope. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much. On to Safety and Health, Councilwoman Fox.
Thank you, Council President Barton. First, Safety and Health Resolution is ID 10608, and this resolution, resolution authorizes an agreement with JCP&L for the installation of electric distribution facilities for the new fire headquarters. This agreement requires the city to pay JCP&L $79,514.86 for the cost of the installation and equipment. Paragraph seven of the agreement sets forth conditions for the refund of this payment over, over more than one year, but not that many years, most likely. I move this resolution.
I second.
Okay, comments from members of council?
I just have one comment, and just to reiterate what Councilwoman Fox mentioned, I had actually asked the chief this question today, because I said, geez, this is a lot of money, and he said, don't worry, we get repaid. So, in case you missed that, we do get refunded, because it is a lot of money. So, I was just asking about it today, and just wanted to mention that it's great that we get that refund.
Right, and I can't be specific about the amount, because it's based on usage, what our bills are multiplied by 10, and we won't know that till we're up and running.
Okay, comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much. On to the second one, Councilmember Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This is a resolution to authorize the Summit Police Department to hold a public auction to dispose of unclaimed or abandoned bicycles. The auction will be held on October 7th. The last auction was held prior to COVID in October of 2019, and the proceeds of the auction will be paid into the account of the city treasurer. I move this resolution.
I second.
Okay, comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent, the motion carries. And the last one, Councilmember Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID 10626. This resolution is to declare two vacancies for lieutenant and a probationary firefighter as the result of two retirements. One is Lieutenant Joseph Mosello, and the second is firefighter Lou Vecchia. And we wish them both good luck in retirement and thank them for their service. I move this resolution.
I second.
Okay, comments from members of council?
I'd just like to say congratulations to both of these individuals. I was able to attend the one today for Joe, and just super proud of both of these members of our community and wish them well.
And just want to add, Joe has been the, an inspector, fire inspector in the city for a really long time, and the good news is that he is heading up the Fire Inspection Safety Process System at Overlook Hospital. So, he'll be training and drilling the nurses, the doctors, and staff, and just, he knows that building really well. So, if we need him, he's not far, so that's good.
Excellent. All right, comments, other comments from council? Comments from members of the public? Okeydoke. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Excellent. Moving on, we have a bunch from Capital Projects and Community Services, Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution 10629. When repealing an ordinance such as the first ordinance of the evening, which seeks to repeal the Broad Street West redevelopment plan, we are required to submit the ordinance to the Planning Board for review and report. This resolution serves to ask the Planning Board to confirm that this decision to repeal the plan is not inconsistent with the master plan. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay, thank you. Comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public?
Hi.
Aye.
Deborah Oliver, 37 Tulip Street. Why does this feel like deja vu all over again? Because we're here, once again, asking this council to do something that you've already promised to do, and that you're still not accomplishing, excuse me, with the ordinance being introduced tonight. Back in February, this council passed, Councilwoman Levine introduced, a resolution promising that council will not proceed with any plans for redevelopment of sub-districts two and four. In July, Council President Barton promised that all of the property, all 16 lots included in the redevelopment plan, would be rezoned back to their prior zoning, an action that would take, quote, that would quote, "take Summit out of the business of redevelopment and end this chapter in Summit's history." Great. The proposed ordinance doesn't do this. It doesn't accomplish what has been promised. The proposed ordinance leaves the so-called blight designations, the areas in need of redevelopment, or ANR designations, in place for all 16 properties covered by the redevelopment plan. This means that at any time in the future, this council, or a new council, can quickly and behind closed doors, because that's the nature of this process, put together a new redevelopment plan that could be worse than Broad Street West. The residents in this town, as Councilwoman Hamlet has mentioned, understand all too well what redevelopment with the capital R under the local redevelopment and housing law, what it looks like. We need only drive down to River Road at Chatham and get shocked. We need only drive to Milburn Avenue in Springfield and get shocked again, because this is the nature of redevelopment, which is done under the LRHL. So, we would like to have council include the de-designations of all the properties in the same ordinance that you're using to repeal the 2019 redevelopment plan, because that way, and there are other options that can be used to accomplish the kinds of things that you're trying to get done with multifamily housing and affordable housing. There's overlay zones that can be made, or there's, for the city-owned property, the Local Lands and Buildings Law, and those laws can be used to achieve either exactly or almost exactly the same kind of thing that was being sought under the capital R redevelopment law. So, please consider redesignating all 16 properties when you consider this ordinance. It could all be done in the same instrument. And then I just have two quick questions.
I'm going to cut you off, we're at three minutes.
But it's relating to the same thing.
We're not going to probably be able to respond to the questions, but give us your questions, and we'll respond.
So, the quick question is, what's, the process June of last year, when we were all down at the community center, which was the introduction of an ordinance, there were like 60 people that got up and spoke, and then Danny O'Sullivan introduced the ordinance. So, earlier this evening, before it was introduced, and the comment was, oh, you can't talk about it until the hearing. Am I just getting confused? It seems like that process was changed. I mean, here I am, making my comment, but...
What's your second question?
...introduction of an ordinance.
Can I have your second question as well?
The second question is, there are some inaccuracies in the draft ordinance that I certainly noticed. There are two properties that are missing from the definition of property that is being covered in the repeal of the 2019 redevelopment law, plan. So, that definitely should be fixed before you have the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, question one, I'll turn over to Matt on the process that we go through for ordinance introductions. We, in Summit, do not typically do public comments around ordinance introductions. We have hearings for that specific purpose.
The hearing is, is to create a record for the ordinance. That's why you give the notice, so people know it's going to be occurring, and on the 3rd of October, you'll be having the actual hearing where the comments are recorded. I, I don't recall that meeting specifically, but that's how we've, since I've been here, you have an introduction, and then the comments are at the second meeting, or the, the second reading of the ordinance.
Okay, and then I'll speak to the second question, which had to do with an error with the ordinance that is in the packet, which is that, that has been fixed, that error has been completely fixed. So, the reason why, just for the folks that are interested, the reason why the ordinance was incorrect is because the, the two lots in question, 2702 Lot 1 and 2702 Lot 2, were designated as an area in need of redevelopment earlier. The, the rest of the, the rest of the area need was done by ordinance in 2017.
Resolution.
Resolution, rather, sorry. The rest of those were designated an area in need of redevelopment in 2017. Those other two units, those other two lots were, were designated prior, 2014.
2014.
Yes, so, that is the reason. An updated version of the ordinance was sent to council members this afternoon. It will be updated in the public-facing packet and materials. And just to be absolutely, completely clear with the community, the intention is remove the redevelopment plan for the entire, the entirety of the redevelopment plan, which includes all blocks and lots and parcels that were listed in the original redevelopment plan. That is the intention. Yes, okay. Next public comment.
Hi, Dory Gagnon, 27 Bedford Road. With all due respect, Council President Barton, your opening comment about, you know, this tension and all that, I mean, you're left leaving the ANR, so, you know, we're going to have a new mayor, and if one mayor is elected, you know, if that's Mr. Naidu, who was the one who put this redevelopment plan into place, and that's still ANR'd, we could have Broad Street West times 10. So, you're trying to pull a fast one over on us, and saying that we're not going to get angry just infuriates me, okay? When you start a meeting off like that, my hands start moving, and my husband watches at me, and he's like, your Italians coming out. Yeah, because you guys say stuff like that. And then, we have to find out, there's 14 of the 16 lots in there, when you could have opened it up and said, oh, by the way, there was an error, and told us in the beginning, and now we're waiting till the end, and public comment, we have to come up here and say that. So, this should all be removed, okay? I've been asking to repeal this redevelopment plan for months. The ANR, everything. No blighting of any of that, nothing. We want our town the way it is. I'm sorry that you want development, Ms. Hairston, but we don't, and we're going to do it the right way, not the way the government wants it, okay? That's it, period.
Thank you for your comment. Okay.
Kevin Gogway with W Avenue. I just want to reference this, because some other people brought it up. This was from Greg. You wrote this on July 5th and had this in an LTE. "While the council has decided that Summit should not continue along the redevelopment path with the redevelopers, the question of what comes next has been thoughtfully considered and discussed by the governing body. It is my opinion that there should be a resolution on the agenda at our next meeting on July 18th that, if adopted, would remove the formal designation of these properties as an area in need of redevelopment." So, I would just like to know what happened, I suppose, since then. It seems pretty obvious that we've learned a lot about redevelopment law and some of the issues that it presents, and I think as Councilwoman Hamlet talked, referenced before, is just look around us, and you can see that a lot of, it seems like a lot of municipalities have fallen for the same mistakes that we, thank God, were able to not make at the very end. But it does worry me that we have the former president of City Council, who led the redevelopment plan, and who led the process, running for mayor again, and the people that are also running on his ticket, I haven't really talked to you, Jamie, so I don't know, did not see any mistakes that had been made previously, and one of them really knew very little about the whole Broad Street West process. So, it just concerns me that having this continue to be an area in need of redevelopment just puts way too much power in people that are volunteers, and they're not professionals, that then have to rely on experts who may or may not be as good as what they believe they are. So, I think that you should absolutely remove the ANR as soon as possible. I don't understand why you wouldn't. If you could maybe tell me what changed from your July 5th letter, Greg, that would be great, or why anybody is still in favor of having these considered to be areas in need of redevelopment. It just makes no sense whatsoever. And this goes back to, you guys want to win back trust. Greg, you say that, it's very definitive, and it's very important to the community that this gets removed, but somehow now it's missing? I don't know. Are you thinking about it? Like, what are we left to believe? Can you answer that?
Do you have other questions also?
No, that's it for now.
Okay, thank you.
It's a big one, so...
Thank you for your comment, yeah. Okay, so here's what I'm going to say. Thank you. So, here's what I'm going to say. The council reached a consensus among ourselves that we are ready to move forward with repealing the redevelopment plan. That's what we're doing tonight. I, we are not, as a council, at a spot where we have consensus on the removal of the area in need of redevelopment, and I think it's more than fair that council members should have the ability to get the information that they need in order to feel comfortable before we move forward with doing that. I think it's, I, I already said in my letter, right, I already said in my letter that with the information that I had, I thought that was the right way to go. I think other people need to get their, the information, and then everybody on this dais can reach their own conclusion about it, and then if we have a consensus to move forward with doing that, we will. But I, I, I don't want to say much more about that at this point. Is that fair? Okay.
Council President, I just want to say that, I'm just going to put it on the record, that you do not, you can still do development and be inclusive and not have an area in need of redevelopment. And I, I am going to say this, that we committed to our community to take out Sub District 2 and 4, and that is very much tied to the area in need of redevelopment, because if you leave it there, then somebody can develop it. And I've heard time and time again that we don't want to get rid of area in need of redevelopment, because then we hamstring ourselves, and this is said publicly, so I'm not saying anything that people haven't heard, but it hamstrings us to potentially not be able to do it in the future. We should be governing for today. We should be listening to our community, which we are tonight, and we're doing the right step. And I think that the one thing, the unique thing about Broad Street West in an era of politicization, politis- whatever, this brought our community, community together across the aisle. People showed up to our council meetings to tell us what they wanted, and, and you're right, there are other people on the aisle who do, or, you know, across the spectrum that want some development. We're not saying no to development. My personal opinion is, area in need of redevelopment is proving across the state to be overdeveloping, it's causing issues, and I think that Summit has taken an extraordinary stand tonight. It is very bold of this council. I give you guys a lot of credit to do what we've done tonight, to repeal this plan. I think it's pretty courageous, and so I just want to put on the record that I, I am personally not afraid to take the next steps, and I think it's important that we hear what the community has to say, and that we deliberate it in, in public, because that's what we're here for. So, thank you.
I have a quick question, and it may sound sarcastic, but it's not meant to be. Is tonight the only night that we're allowed to make decisions on Broad Street West? Or can we make a decision later? Are we able to bring something up, ordinancees, resolutions later in the year?
Yes, we, yes, of course. Yes, we, yes, of course. Yeah, so, so what's happening here tonight is, is one thing, which I think is actually pretty significant. There, there can be many, many new steps to be taken, but to just be clear, what, what it seems like everybody on the dais is, is in favor of, because we voted unanimously on it before, right, is that we are all in favor of repealing the Broad Street West redevelopment plan. And that is, that is where we are in complete agreement right now. We will get to an agreement on a bunch of other things, and there will be more to come. I'm gonna, yes.
Sorry. I got one last comment. I mean, I think it's my resolution, right?
Yes.
I think I got lost in that. I think we, I can't speak openly, obviously, about what we, what happens in closed session, but I can say we had a very good closed session tonight. We met at 6 o'clock, and with the exception of 10 minutes of a power outage, it was a very productive conversation, and I think the public would feel very good if they had a little, little ear in the room. That's how I feel. I also know that our council president is the one who decides when something goes on the agenda.
Yes.
And I, I, I trust that you're gonna do it, you're gonna make a choice and do it if and when it's the right thing. And I want to say that publicly.
Yes, thank you, thank you. And, yes.
I'm sorry if I may add one more thing. This may sound redundant, but it's not meant to be. We're out of the redevelopment business.
Yeah.
We're out of the redevelopment business. We're out of the redevelopment business. We're out of the redevelopment business.
All right.
Wait, I have one more comment. I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
One more comment.
Let's wrap this up. We gotta vote on this soon.
Yes. While I can't say what we talk about in closed session, what I can say is to extricate from something that's been mis-involved and been going on this many years is not done quickly, and it took a lot for this ordinance to come to fruition. And we need to do it carefully and slowly, and doing too much at once could be harmful. As you pointed out, two of the lots were left off the ordinance. We, just to, you know, call a spade a spade, I don't want to do too much at once. We're doing this carefully, slowly, and deliberately in a way that is safest for the city.
Yeah, okay. I think we should vote. I think we should vote on it, right?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? The motion carries. Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, on to the next one. Council Member Levine.
Thank you, Council President. My computer fell asleep in that moment of time. Resolution number 10636 amends the professional services agreement with Dynamic Traffic LLC for the 2023 consultant engineering services in amount not to exceed $200,000. Our engineering department underestimated all of the amount of work that this firm would do for us in 2023, and how this firm was actually the best proposal we received to conduct a significant traffic study on the Morris Avenue corridor study of signals. So we're going to need our not, need to increase our not-to-exceed amount for this firm. The Morris Avenue corridor study will evaluate all the traffic signals on Morris Avenue, and they haven't been upgraded in about 20 years. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second that.
Excellent. Okay, comments from members of council? Comments from?
I'd like, yeah.
What, sorry?
You probably have a better question.
No, go ahead.
I just, I just wanted to better understand the breakdown. That's it. The breakdown. Yeah, the $100,000. So just understanding where the $100,000 is gonna go, because we, how much has been spent? You know, what is it that you need the money for? Because we originally gave $100,000 for the entire year, so here we are in September. I just want to understand why another $100,000.
Here, I can start to answer it, and then I'll send it to you for the specifics. It's actually because we're doing so much to make the roads safer, that we want to do more work. And this is for more traffic studies, more road improvements, and this is what, this is what we need to keep pedestrians and drivers safe. And it's just been such a banner year for the department, and there's more good work to do. And Aaron, and I trust Aaron's assessment here. Oh, also, as Aaron explained to me, we contract with a not-to-exceed type contracts with several engineering firms at a time, because as you know, if, when you call a professional, they can't always come right away when you need them. Sometimes they can come and do your job in six weeks or eight weeks. And so in this particular situation, some of the other engineering firms that we have contracts with are really are not available, so we have to work with them. Or we're delaying some of these progress, these improvements that we want to make. So that's really the biggest reason. I know, but I agree. I looked at the numbers, too.
Aaron, can you just confirm, my understanding is that, that we, we had about five resolutions that we do at the beginning of every year on capital projects with engineering firms, and we had several that we're not gonna even use, we're not gonna use the whole amount. So in aggregate, we're actually not spending more. It's just we're using it for this particular firm because they're available and we're happy with the work they're doing, correct?
Correct. Through you, Council President. At the, it's summer at the end of last year, 2022, at the beginning of this year, we awarded six professional service contracts to six different engineering consultants. Dynamics was $100,000, which we've currently used, $97,000. I will share a bulk of that was the 50-plus thousand for redesigning the traffic signals downtown, which will be reimbursed by a grant once that project gets going, so that's good. But we only have $3,000 left. We have a lot of studies that are still outstanding and some work we need done. I only have the ability to use them for 3,000, but through the summer, I was reaching out to our other consultants and was getting prices that were either much higher or non-responsive or just too busy to do the work. So this is just a tool to be able to use them additionally. I certainly understand that $100,000 sounds like it's a lot, but they are a candidate who gave a proposal for the Morris Avenue corridor study, which would be 50,000. So suddenly now we're only at about, you know, 50,000 left for three months of the year. And we don't necessarily need to use all of that. We might use none of it beyond the potential 50. All of these revert back to, you know, essentially zero out at the end of the year. Of the six we awarded, we're at about 52% of the total that we were awarded that we've actually used, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Other comments? Members of council? Comments, members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. On to the third one. Council Member Levine.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution number 10641 awards a bid to Corelli and Son General Contractors for the amount of $483,955 for the Ridgedale Avenue and Colonial Road Improvement Project. This represents the lowest responsible bid out of a total of 10 bids received. They've worked in our city before with good results. The project will include inspection and repair of storm and sanitary sewers, installation of granite, granite block curb where none currently exists, repairs to existing granite block curb and disrepair, and milling and paving of the entire lengths of both roads. The project should be completed in approximately eight to 10 weeks, tentatively set to begin in October. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay, comments from members of council? Comments, members of the public? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And next one is number four. Council Member Levine is gonna recuse for this one.
I was advised by our attorney to recuse because of my recent relationship with the Reeves, Reed Arboretum, so I'll continue to recuse.
And just to be clear, you were on the board and now are not on the board, but just to be perfectly ethical in avoiding any appearance, appearance of impropriety, you're following the advice of our council. Okay, so I will turn it over to Council Member Fox.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID 10635. This resolution authorizes the execution of an agreement with Union County to confirm the redirection of funds in the amount of $75,000. This amount was originally allocated to the Mount Vernon, Kent Place Boulevard sidewalk and pedestrian safety project. And when we got close to getting started on that work, we, concerns were raised by the residents. And because we have to finish the work within the year in order to qualify for these Union County grant funds, we decided to reallocate the money to the Hobart Avenue Sidewalk Improvement Project to give us more time to work with the residents to address their concerns at, on Mount Vernon and Kent Place. So this change of locations was just to make sure that we didn't forfeit the grant money. On July 5th, council approved a resolution to authorize the mayor to request that the grant funding be reallocated to the Hobart Avenue sidewalk project. The county agreed, but then requested us to sign this, this agreement. So accordingly, we're, we are now seeking a resolution to authorize the execution of this agreement. This should be the last one. I move this resolution.
And I will second that, and let's make damn sure it's the last one, because we want to put this sidewalk in. Okay, council member comments. Yes?
Thank you, Council President. I had a question either for, I actually, probably for you, Director Schrager. Is, do you know, do you have a timeline of when we're gonna be revisiting Mount Vernon, when we're gonna be going back to that sidewalk project? And is it, is it canceled, or is it, is it still alive?
Certainly through you, Council President. That sidewalk project and any others that are not physically under contract are just kind of on pause. What we're waiting for is the sidewalk installation and maintenance plan to be re-released and be revised, because that has a master plan of the sidewalks in the city of where they, one exists and two should go. So we think that document, which will come out later this month, will then be a reference we could use as we move forward. But, but no projects have been canceled yet. Others are being investigated, and that one is just on pause.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Excellent. And we will invite our colleague back in. Come on for the next one. Okay, whenever you're ready for number five, Councilwoman Levine.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. Per closed-session discussion, Resolution 10533 appoints a new building subcode official. Should I say his name? Because it was closed session, or no?
You could.
Okay.
Pointing a new person. Very exciting. Welcome to Summit.
Sorry, one second. His name is Mr. Leonard Mendoza. His term is effective today for four years. So welcome to Mr. Mendoza, and I move to adopt this resolution.
And a second?
Second.
Sorry.
No worries. Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. All right. And assuming no objection from our city solicitor, we'll bundle six through nine.
No objection.
Fantastic. Councilwoman Levine, take us away.
Thank you, Council President. Per closed-session discussion, Resolutions 6, 7, 8, and 9 listed in the agenda declare vacancies within the Department of Community Services for the following positions: part-time fire subcode official, full-time maintenance worker, a lead foreman, and a part-time property maintenance inspector. I move to, I move these four resolutions for adoption.
I second.
Okay, comments from members of council?
There, well, there, it's due, I'm just gonna highlight the two, just we are saying names, I'm just gonna highlight the two people who are scheduled for retirement quickly.
Sure, sure.
Doug Rollo and Joe Michello. So I'm just, I just want to acknowledge their names and say them at the meeting, and thank them for their service, congratulate them on their retirement.
Thank you. Okay, comments, other comments, members of council? Nope. Comments, members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motions carry. Okay, and we are on to the consent agenda. I would just like to say kudos to everybody involved in seeing the Beacon Road Improvement Project come in $22,000 under budget. That's excellent. We will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Can, I just want to pull something out.
Okay, to discuss, or you want to vote no?
Oh, I just want to discuss it.
Okay, so let's get a second, and then we'll discuss it. So let's get a second.
Second?
Okay, and then, and then over to you.
I just had a question about the animal control services, and I tried to do a little bit of research. I know I was complaining, I think, about the costs for that service, but is, I just wanted to see if anybody had any, had done any research on whether or not eventually that could become a shared service. Maybe that's a question for, for you, Michael, but I just was thinking, I'm not sure if, it's looked like a lot of other municipalities are doing that as a shared service. So I'm just curious.
We certainly can look at that. My experience with shared services is that you are paired with a lead agency that might be larger, and you run into problems with response. And I think that's why other municipalities who were in those, and I was in one in a previous community, where we pulled out of it, and that's why more have gone through, gone to the animal control service and, and that model under the auspices of the Board of Health and the health officers. So it's something we can relook at. We can always do that with any service. But I think that's been the reasons why communities have gotten away from the, having some type of part-time or shared service with, with another municipality.
Thank you. To you, Council President, I would like to respond to Councilwoman Hamlet, because I had the same question about it, and I want to say to you why we would not want to do a shared service like that. You think about the residents who had the bear on their, in their neighborhood. I think it was even maybe in your neighborhood, Mayor, or, yes, Mercer Drive. You would not want to have shared services at that time to hold you, hold you up. And, and then the dead, the dead animal removal that they do. To be able to call and have somebody available on call is not something we want to be in a queue about, so. But it is a costly, it is costly. I know I visited their booth at the league municipalities, so you can go complain to them about how they're expensive, their services are, but they are much needed.
I, I think animal, thank you, thank you both. I, I think animal control services, the, the bear today would be a police matter, right? And, and I don't know, was animal control services involved today?
No, it would be wildlife, New Jersey wildlife, you will get involved in that.
Right, and then, and then the, the dead animals are also not animal control, right? Dead animals are, are who?
DP.
Oh, no, they think they are.
Well, we have a contract for bears, for, for deer, apparently.
Dead deer.
Dead deer.
Other dead stuff.
Other dead stuff is Public Works, right?
Public Works, yes. Okay, all right. Well, we're at the, we're at the dead animal
portion of the evening. Yes, Councilwoman Levine.
Through you, Council President, may I just highlight something in the consent agenda?
Sure.
The first capital projects resolution authorizes a bid for the fall 2023 citywide tree planting project. With this bid, with this service, we look to plant 50 more trees. And Councilmember Matt Gould had led the charge to set a goal of planting 1,000 trees in four years. So this morning, in our Capital Projects Committee meeting, we talked about where we are with that tally. And after these 50 trees, we're gonna be at nearly 1,200 trees planted in those four years. So that's a very exciting victory and really good for Summit. So I just wanted to point that out.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Consent agenda is chock full of good news, in addition to dead animals. Okay, other comments on the consent agenda? Comments from members of the public? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Excellent. We are now at the public comment section of the evening. We welcome comments from members of the public about issues that are not topics on the business agenda.
Hello, everyone. Jamelle Boyer, Tsusor Forum, Morris Avenue. Just, at first, wanna congratulate Susan. Susan does have tremendous deep roots in Summit, and I appreciate your service. And my wife texted me, and she said, "To add to your many accolades, accolades, excuse me, would be your Girl Scout troop leader." So, congratulations, though. Thank you. I was looking at the, excuse me for a second, the general information section here, and it looks like Milburn Township had adopted their historic preservation element to their master plan. And back in December of 2022, Councilwoman Fox, Thomas master plan. And back in December of 2022, Councilwoman Fox, Thomas Conway had submitted a document to you for a new HPC ordinance. And I wanted to know whether or not that, if that ordinance was adopted, because I couldn't find it anywhere.
Can I, let's just do all the questions first upfront, and then we'll, and then we'll answer the ones we can answer.
Okay, so, yeah, I'll wait for the answer to that. If it, if it wasn't adopted, I think it's essential for improving our community's historic preservation efforts. The document indicates that our current ordinance is considered weak and lags behind the standards set by other towns like Milburn. So adopting this draft ordinance will bring our preservation efforts to the level of our neighboring towns. The proposed ordinance demonstrates our commitment to maintain the unique charm and character of our town, and implementing this ordinance will balance progress and preservation and foster sustainable development. So I urge the council to consider it if they have it already. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll start. I, as Council President, I have to choose what ordinances go on the agenda, or resolutions go on the agenda. I will not support the HPC ordinance as written, and neither does the chair, the current chair of the HPC either. The three reasons, my three reasons why are, one, it fundamentally changes the nature of the HPC from advisory to regulatory. There is no budget for professionals to assist them. The second is, it adds administrative tasks to city staff in a, in a process that is already very complex. And proper consideration by council members needs to be given to the need to balance historic preservation with property owners' rights. So the potential impact to the future of investment in our city has not been fully vetted, and it is not ready, in my opinion. So however, I will say, the CAP Committee is looking into an ordinance specifically to address demolitions, because there, it is true that right now, we do not have strong protection against demolitions of historic buildings. And I think that's an issue that we can much more easily deal with than adopting an ordinance that completely reshapes the Historic Preservation Commission and our city's approach to it at this time. So do you want to add anything to that?
The only thing, the only thing I would add is just, it's not just changing the approach to historic preservation, it's also changing how our permitting process works, which means delays at each step for residents, even if they're not in historic, even if they're in a historic district but don't have a historic home. And it just, you know, the concern is just making permitting more expensive and slower for everyone. So we have to find a balance, and that's what we're trying to do.
I'm going to comment, because I don't entirely agree with what you both said. I think there are some aspects of, and I've said this before, this isn't news.
Yep.
There's some aspects of the ordinance that I think very much rise to the surface as things we need to seriously consider and are very helpful. It's a very long ordinance, and yes, it would be, to pass all of it would require a shift in our municipal budget and a whole host of other things that can't be done quickly. But then if you, you know, there are some aspects I very much want to look at. We've invited the chair to come and meet with staff, learn how the construction office works, and the permitting process works, and so on and so forth. And there, there are a lot of aspects to that concept of demolition that need, that need attention. Because right now, it's so easy to demolish a home in Summit.
Yeah.
Council, Council President?
Yeah.
As the liaison to the Historic Preservation Committee, I want to echo what Council President said about the ordinance, the ordinance that Mr. Conway wrote was thorough and, I don't want to use the word grandiose in a, in a negative way, but much bigger than what would be appropriate for what the city would, how we would want to move forward with, with what he wrote. Because I know in big cities like New York City, how historic preservation really works, and in some southern towns in New Jersey. But that is, for the very reasons that Councilwoman Fox gave, is why we wouldn't want to. But what is awesome is just what was lifted up. There was really good language in there to help with what they were pointing out about demolition. And so I am very happy to hear that CAP is taking that on. And I encourage everyone, if you want to see some amazing professionals at work, go to the HPC Committee. They really do a great job of looking at all of the things that, the blueprints of things that come up. And that ordinance would not allow them to operate in that way. So I'm glad it's being revisited.
Thank you. Other comments?
Good evening. Diego Quake, Albert Court. First of all, thank you, Susan Hurston, for your service, and it's good to have you back, Administrator Rogers. I was here on June 20th, talking about paving of streets in particular park, and I'm glad to see how good that project worked, and how well those lines in the parking lane are actually effective in slowing down speeds. So now I have questions about Oxbow Lane, Woodmere Road, Essex, Dogwood, Rotary, and Division. And I would like to know, we're getting close to the end of the summer. We know what's going to happen with the asphalt plants in November. Some of these streets I just mentioned, like Rotary, are really in bad shape, or Oxbow Lane. Others are in better shape, but it would be nice to finish the work that we started that has been going on so well that people are no longer complaining about paving of the streets. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And if you want to submit to us the list, we'll have to, we'll have to get back to you.
I will, I will email it to Rosie.
Sure.
I can answer about Oxbow.
Oh, okay.
Or Jamie, you do it, Jamie.
We'll, we'll have you sit down, unless you have other questions.
I will mail the list anyhow, but I.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have them all memorized and Aaron, Aaron left, but Oxbow and Wildwood we're trying to do before the end of the year. That I know for sure. And Division.
October 1st was the tentative date.
Great. So that's wonderful. And I know Division, it was set to start, in the starting blocks, and it was some snafu with, on the New Providence End with funding, because it's, we're sharing the money together, and they approved it. So that's, I know, I know. That's what we're, that's what we're waiting for, just being very honest and transparent. But, you know.
We had a couple of other paving updates.
Oh, go ahead, yeah.
Oak Knoll is at, Oak Knoll Road, which is the little teeny road off Blackburn Road, is going to be starting tomorrow and going through the end of September. It was delayed because of weather. Prospect is going to be starting on next Monday, and Rowan and Oak Ridge should be finished tomorrow. So those are, you can see on the city's website, there are updates that are kept up on some of these dates.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Thanks, Marjorie.
All right.
Good evening. Claire Toth, 11 Sunset Drive, and I echo my neighbors' compliments to Susan and to Michael. Can't wait to hear what you think about Hyde Park, Susan. I also want to, primarily, I want to thank the city for installing the flash, the flashing pedestrian signals in the past week, particularly the one on Baldur's Road, but also by Bryant Park. And basically, keep up the good work. There are so many places where they could be used primarily for getting children safely to school. And once we've done, once the city has done all those, would also love to see at, at Morris Court, by connecting the community center across Morris Avenue to the Learning Circle. A lot of children go back and forth between those two buildings, and it should be a lot safer than it is. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is on our list, right?
It is on the list.
Morris Court and Morris Ave is on our list of approved flashing beacon locations. I don't know where we are with that.
We are going to be reviewing our, the list and sort of having a conversation in safety about where it makes sense to go next.
And prioritizing.
Prioritizing schools.
Prioritization so far has been schools and, and walking traffic.
Particularly busy walking.
Yes. Okay. Good. Other comments?
Kevin, go again. I would just like to point out, back to the area in need of redevelopment designation, Andy Miniger says that we're not in the redevelopment, that we're not going to be in the redevelopment business. It sounds like, Jamie, you also want to get rid of the area in need of redevelopment. So by my count, I think that's a definitive four, if Greg, you're still in that boat. So I don't understand. And Jamie, I know what you're saying, things move slowly, you need to be careful, but, I mean, this is not, this is not a new process. This is not a new thing. We've been working on this for a very long period of time. There's been tremendous amount of mistakes. I think we've seen how awful the idea of.
So we've already had the public comment about this.
Okay, well, yeah, well, I'm just following.
This is about stuff not on the agenda now. These public comments.
Okay, well, just something that I was responding to, some things that have been learned from here. It sounds like maybe Andy doesn't understand that without, with the area in need of redevelopment still in place, you are still in the redevelopment business. And I think Andy maybe didn't understand that. So that was the, the one thing. I don't know. I, I'm going to hold off on some other comments that I had for now, but I just wanted to clear that up.
Thank you.
Hello. Rosemary Grace, Chestnut Avenue. I just want to bring the conversation, the question back to flashing beacons. There is a flash, not a flashing beacon, just a stationary beacon, that rarely works, from my experience. It's at the intersection of Summit Avenue and Euclid. I'm wondering if that is, it's a very old one. It's got to be at least 10 years old. And I know that there was a child that was hit very seriously there when I lived on Summit Avenue. So that's over five years ago. It's probably going back even 10 years. It doesn't flash. It's a solar-enabled, which, for some reason, and I remember bringing that up to the engineering department a long time ago as well. It just, at night, I was walking by there the other night, and it wasn't lighted. And that's a very bad place to, to cross. And a lot of school kids cross there. And I know there's a crossing guard, but even the crossing guards, I think, take their lives in their hands very often there. So I just wanted to see if that was on your list or not. And, and if it's not, I hope that you will facilitate that.
We'll talk to, we'll talk to Aaron Trager about it.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Follow up on that one.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. And just a reminder to everyone about the See Click Fix, Report a Concern section of the city website. Stuff like this, missing garbage, missing recycle pickup, potholes, trees, it's a good spot. Yes.
Non-emergency.
Non-emergency, non-emergencies.
Good evening. Kevin Smallwood, 160 Summit Avenue. So we're going to have a very beautiful fire station, right? I spoke with the chief ever a couple of weeks ago, and they're hoping that they could probably move in potentially October, November. So with the thought process of building a new fire station, a whole part of funding it was part of Broad Street West. And as we all know, government follows a lot of processes and procedures, which takes a long time. So without including the ANWR in tonight's, which I applaud you for repealing the Broad Street West Redevelopment Plan, but without including ANWR, there's going to be another longer process to begin. And that means it's going to take even longer for this to actually get approved and hearings, and then actually putting this out to bid. So I believe the number was somewhere between eight to 10 million dollars, the original cost of the fire station, and now we're close to 17 million dollars. So I'm not quite sure how we're going to be able to pay for this. And, you know, I, I wish we could have considered putting ANWR into the repeal tonight with Broad Street West Redevelopment. So I'm just kind of concerned about the, the cost of the fire station, how we're going to pay for this. And the longer that we keep drawing out this process, the longer it's going to take us to put this out to bid and help pay for the cost of the current, close to 17 million dollars, if not more.
Thank you for your comment. Okay. Any other comments?
I think I have an interesting one. Or an interesting one. Susan Bowen, Waldron Avenue. I'm wondering how in the, the ordinance that we, you just approved for repealing the redevelopment district, on October 3rd, you're going to ratify that, or vote to ratify that. How does that work with Councilwoman Hurston, with this new individual who theoretically is coming on board perhaps before October 3rd? I just want to make sure that we're all aware that we really need to make sure that that individual is up to speed on this incredibly complicated issue, and potentially making a very important vote that we will not have Ms. Hurston's knowledge and background to do, because this person will be, perhaps, if I'm 25 days, I don't even know what 25 days from today is, that person really is going to hit the ground running, and really is going to have an important vote, perhaps in his or her first meeting. So I want us all to be aware that that person has to do an awful lot of work to get up to speed, because this is incredibly complicated. And that's just my, that's just my thought.
And you don't, you're not alone in thinking that. We're very much aware of what we need to do.
Thank you.
Hi, how are you? Elizabeth Fagan, Hawthorne Place. So just two quick questions. One, I saw surveyors on Canoe Brook Parkway, and I'm just curious, I know there's some talk about sidewalks on Canoe Brook Parkway. I was curious if, I didn't, I couldn't find it on the sidewalk sort of master plan, if the sidewalk is supposed to go all the way from Bedford to Route 24, or 24 Access Road, whatever. So that's one question. And the other question is, how do we fix See Click Fix if, like, the app actually doesn't work? So is there a See Click Fix app to fix the See Click Fix app? Because I went on See Click Fix, because there's something in my neighborhood that I thought needed to be fixed, and it won't let me do, it won't let me input the, the problem. So is there a different way to?
She'll call me in the morning, I can help her.
Okay.
Just call you, Rosie.
All right. Were those the two questions?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, so for the second one, call Rosie.
Okay.
In the morning. She'll help with that.
Perfect.
This way I can see if.
Rosie's the See Click Fix for everything.
Oh, it's really you.
Everything at, at all. And then, I don't know the answer.
She's our super secret app.
I don't know the answer to the, I, I don't know the answer to the first one.
I don't know, I don't know the answer, but I know we have a million dollar grant that we got for Canoe Brook. So there'll be a lot of work coming up on Canoe Brook, but I don't know where the, I don't know the details of where the sidewalks are going to go.
The, the detail is that we don't know any details yet, because there isn't a plan yet. But we have a million dollars to do an overhaul of the road. Everything from milling and paving and curbing and other safety measures at intersections. I've heard.
Drainage.
Drainage. I've heard rumblings of even, you know, contemplating a new, you know, circle, or someone mentioned. But there'll be ample opportunity for public input on that before, for the neighbors who live there. So a plan hasn't even been drawn.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay.
I probably will be the last speaker, maybe not.
Name and.
David Naidoo, 100 West End Avenue. And I just want to talk about Susan for a moment, because public service requires private sacrifice. And Susan has been doing public service for a really long time. She was on the school board. There are plaques in schools that have her name on it because of her service there. She was school board president. Her family has been involved in this town for a really long time, been involved in the fabric of this community for a long time. And the way that Susan came onto council was then, when our dear friend Matt Gould passed away, and we had to look for a person who wanted to step up and join council, at I think a very difficult time for those of us who were on it. We had a very, very challenging moment personally, over having lost a dear colleague in such a surprising and quick fashion. And Susan was unhesitating in willing to come up and run that year after Stephanie, Matt's wife, served for the remainder of his term till the election happened. And then she ran for her term. And during that period of time, Susan has been a voice, not always that I agree with, and every time. And during that period of time, Susan has been a voice, not always that I agree with and every time. But, and, but Susan knows to listen sometimes to those quiet voices, those people who don't speak loudly, who don't yell and shout, who whisper, who say things quietly because that's how they can say it and need to say it. And sometimes they don't even say it, but you need to feel what the rest of the community is, the 22,000 people, many of whom cannot participate because they work hard. They don't have the time to come to meetings. They have the time to take care of their kids and their job. And they expect the people who serve them to represent them to the best of their ability to make the right decisions based upon the facts that they know at that time, to come to compromises because that's what government is. And that's what Susan tries to do. Find those compromises, find ways to listen to those people. So Susan, as you continue your journey of adventure with Jerome, I wish you the best of luck. And I hope that you have a great time and enjoy yourself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Erwin Miller, 5 Knop Hill Drive. I know David wanted to be last, some low-key politicking. So sorry to do your thunder. Sorry we didn't get to know each other more. Only been here three years, so still getting my feet wet in this town. My question is, is there, has there been any thought by the council? Can I ask by members of the council or, I guess, I don't know how that technically works, by the council, I guess, with regard to the potential recommendation by the CDC on new COVID vaccines for young children? And if there is a recommendation for young children, is there a plan in place to either allow our school board to implement that as a requirement to attend school for children? Or a plan to oppose that if our school board wishes to do that? Has our town thought about that? And then I guess the second question related is, has there been any type of debrief or conversation, whether in private or public, by the leadership in the town, whether that's town council, Board of Education or otherwise, with regard to their policies and implementation of other policies by state leadership during 2021 and early 2022?
That's, that's all the questions?
I got a lot, a lot more questions, but those are all my questions for now.
Okay, thank you. So we'll, we'll have you have a seat and then we'll answer the ones that we can.
Sorry, sorry, one more. Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
In terms of like the policies and procedures here, how are those, you know, there's a lot of, we're through you, pro-ten, that happens a lot. Or we have, someone asks a question and you might answer it or you might not. We don't know if it's like a, I'm making a comment or I'm asking a question with regard to the recording and people zooming in and asking questions virtually, all those policies. Do we have to do all that? How do we change those policies? What is the procedure to change any of those policies? Thanks, that's my third question.
Okay.
And now-
Sounds good, thank you. Okay, so I will start with the last one because it's the easiest for me to answer. So the council operates based on a set of rules that we adopt at the beginning of the year. And that's done at our organizational meeting. And we typically, just as a matter of procedure up here, run things according to Robert's Rules of Order, which is both tradition, but then formally adopted in our, in our council rules as well. So the council rules can be amended by resolution. They can be suspended, I think, in some circumstances. And, and that's, I think, the gist of that answer. I don't know if we can answer the other two. I'm going to look to the-
Well, I could answer the, the vaccine, first, this body has no power over vaccinations. That's a state law. The school board itself can't even mandate vaccinations. That has to come down from the state of New Jersey. There are certain vaccinations that are required under state law to attend public schools. And there's a number of exceptions, both religious and medical. Constitutionally, there has to be a religious and medical exemption for vaccinations for any kid to attend public school. That's all governed by state law. This governing body has no authority on that whatsoever. In fact, the local school board doesn't even have that authority. It's all dictated by the state legislature and the governor. The second issue about policies the state puts out, the, the state, I think you're referring to school board policies. That all derives from legislation or the Department of Education, who's appointed by the governor. The Commissioner of Education promulgates guidelines and/or policies that are required. There are certain policies that are mandated. For example, HIB is a mandated policy. Every district has to have it. There's other policies that are permissive, but that does not come from this body. It all comes again from the state legislature or the Commissioner of Education, who then requires or recommends that boards promulgate certain policies. And then the board follows that independently of this body.
Okay.
Council, council president, I, I'd like to respond because I, I think the other piece, Mr. Allen, Erwin?
No.
Miller, Mr. Miller, I remember you coming to the health committee meetings. And I believe what he also may be referencing is when we had a state of emergency that was dictated by the federal government that overrode everything that we had to do. And that superseded all local policies. And as a governing body during 2020, during 2021, we had, as a council, had to use those guidelines. Nora, you'll remember.
Well, it wasn't even guidelines. It was actually executive order.
A mandate, executive order, yes.
It was executive orders, which are the, by the governor.
Yeah.
And in our state, under this, our constitution, an executive order by the governor, the sitting governor, has the effect of law.
Yeah.
And actually, the executive orders that were passed said that if any governing body, school board, et cetera, violated it, it was a crime punishable also by a fine. So those were, those were laws, again, dictated by the state, not by this, this body.
So I can ask a follow-up?
No.
Well, let's, if you want to have a further discussion about it, just send us an email and we'll set up a time. That's, that's the best way.
I'll get the answer.
That's the best way to, that's the best way to, to make sure that we're adequately addressing the questions. Okay.
Okay.
No, not yet.
Sorry, David. Dory Gagman, I have a couple of questions. Ashwood Court, I've been staying with the residents, helping them out, working with that GoFundMe, trying to give them some, raise them some money so they can get some trees and stuff. The walkway that's there, there's now a nice big fence, but there's a walkway and it's not ADA accessible. And I know Councilwoman Levine has talked about making things accessible for people with disabilities because we both have something in common. We like to work with people with disabilities. So that walkway is not accessible for people with disabilities. And we have no idea why that walkway is there. So maybe we can be enlightened if that's coming down or as to why that's there, if that's for kids to walk. But if somebody has a disability, that walkway needs to be removed. I like the vaccination topic because I actually got fined for my dog not being, his dog license not being renewed on time, but he was vaccinated for the rabies. And his rabies wasn't due for like three months. So I wasn't going to over vaccinate my dog because his license wasn't due. So there's, there's a problem here within the city of having our, our permits for our transfer station and our parking permits and our licenses for our dogs when they're actually due at the time, like a year from when we put them in. So let's say I get a new car and I put it in tomorrow. Miss look at these and I say, okay, this is what I'm going to do. In November, I'd have to do it again. So in a couple of months, I pay the $10 today, but in November, it's up anyway. So I'm proposing the city figure out a way to say, okay, a year from tomorrow, it would be due again. And so for everyone who doesn't have to redo another $10 in two months when they get a new car and they're trying to get a parking permit downtown or a transfer station, it's not double the work because it's already very complicated on the city website to try to get a parking permit, a transfer station and all that, and then having to redo it again two months later. And with the dog thing, I wasn't going to redo, renew my dog's permit. I was waiting until his rabies was due. And what I found out from the Health Department is that if you don't renew it right away, you get a summons to court. You get a ticket in the mail and you have to go to court. So here we are fighting crime and people entering our homes and trespassing. And if you don't pay this right away to the city and get your dog over vaccinated or your cat over vaccinated, you're getting a fine and getting sent to the city. So this is something I talked to the Health Department about. And they said the only way to change this is through you guys magically. So here I am. This is something that has to be put as an ordinance and changed through the city of Summit. So people are over vaccinating their animals, just like we're not over vaccinating our children. So that's something that unfortunately I am bringing to your attention. And I'd also like an answer to Mr. Smallwood's question about the firehouse. And I'm really concerned that's why we're keeping this area blated is figuring out a way to pay for this because we're all very concerned as taxpayers.
I'm going to ask you to wrap up now, please.
Okay, I know I'm the last person to want to go home. But I'm very concerned as to how we're going to pay for this firehouse. And I'm really sorry, Mr. Rogers, I forgot to welcome you back. I, I lost 100 bucks. I, I bet somebody that I shooed you away. You retired me, but I am really glad to welcome you home. So thank you for being here.
And it's his birthday.
Oh, yeah, happy birthday.
Okay. All right. Okay, I'm going to work backwards on this also. I'll start with the firehouse. So the leaders of this community have known for 30 or 40 years that the firehouse could no longer support the needs of a modern fire department. We have, we have 80 miles of roads, two major highways. We have a regional hospital system. We have two pharmaceutical campuses. We have a dense downtown. So the need for a new firehouse was separate and apart from Broad Street. And I, my vote on this to support the firehouse was very clear and separate from Broad Street because the community and our firefighters needed us to do the firehouse and to move ahead with it. And it was never going to get any less expensive, the longer council waited and waited and waited. So I'm very glad that we had a council with the political will to move ahead and give our first responders the things that they needed. It was paid for with municipal bonds, which are 40-year bonds. It was bonded, the amount that was bonded at the time was 15.3 million. And it was part of a $31.8 million bond sale. So it's a part now of our ongoing debt service that is a part of our operating budget. The, 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 the one Broad Street comment that I will make on this is that it cannot have been expected that we would get more money from the property and also do something smaller on it. So, so the, the idea of totally paying off the firehouse, I think, was never realistic. I think the idea of partially paying off the firehouse was very realistic. And I think, of course, now we do have to continue along the path of determining what happens in the spot where the firehouse property is now. So I think that's all I'll say about the firehouse. The, the second thing is, the thing about November and the parking permits is something I have been frustrated about. I, as well, I share that frustration. I think we, we've talked, I was on the parking committee. I made no progress on that. I was unsuccessful in doing anything about that. So, so the parking committee, Rita, Michael, can we do anything? You don't have to answer right now, but I think I agree with you. It's an important thing. The second thing is the vaccination topic of the dogs. I think Marjorie knows something about this.
Yeah, so that's, one thing that, that's a thing that I share your frustration about because I've, I've had to struggle with that because I never seem to time it right. But one thing that you should know is that your vet can write a letter saying that your dog shouldn't be vaccinated until whatever date it is and they will accept that. So it's a good thing to know if you can get, if you're, you know, I had an older dog, so I didn't, she was 14 years old and I didn't want to revaccinate her just because she was so old. And my vet was willing to write a letter for me. And so I was able to put it off until her, her vaccine was due. So just something to know about. But it's something we can look into, but I think it's just, they issue all the licenses at the same time. And I think it's kind of a tracking thing, but we could certainly look into it and see if there's a way to-
I just think the summons was a little harsh.
I can't answer that part of it, but in the future-
That's a last resort though.
What? Can I, may I?
Yeah, dump it.
I think the summons issue is a last resort. The Health Department does make every effort to, you know, advise the dog owners that it's coming up due. And it's a little frustrating, I get that. But, you know, they, they try to avoid the summons issue process as much as they possibly can. So they will work with you if they have to. I don't know what your experience has been, but I used to do the dog licenses. Trust me, I don't want to do this, I didn't want to do the summonses either because it, it does, part of it requires that the staff go to the court, the court appearance. And we don't want to have to do that either. So, yeah, last resort.
Okay. Anything we want to talk about on the parking permit thing? No, not now?
I can't now, I can't answer those questions.
That's right.
Tomorrow's another day, but I'll get back to you, Dory.
Get back to you on that one. And then on the Ashwood Court question, there's, there is a dedicated city staff person who is sending regular updates to the neighbors of Ashwood Court. And council has copied on all of those. And I'm, I, I think, happy to say that we're moving forward in a way that's really productive.
Yeah, that's, over the summer, there's weekly, they get a weekly update. And he was very careful about saying, this, this engineer or this contractor is going to be there and what the steps are. And it's, in, from my estimation and talking with Tammy Baldwin and staff member, that things are improving. They're not done yet. So it takes, it takes a long time. And there have been, there have been people on both sides who have been a little unreasonable. But I think we're in a much better place now than we were a month ago. And, and they're, they're working diligently to make, to bring this to a close.
Okay.
I got something to say.
Okay.
You know, I lived in this town for 85 years.
What's your name, sir?
Phil Ryan.
Okay.
Okay, I talk loud because I got a hearing and it's going down.
No worries.
Okay. The other day, I went up to City Hall, upstairs to the Public Works. I says, I want to talk to somebody from the Safety Committee. Right, they says, we don't have no Safety Committee. Now I look down here, the police and firemen have Safety Committees. Where I came from, Jersey Central had Safety Committees. You don't have no Safety Committee in the Public Works?
So do you have a bunch of questions?
We can.
Do you have a bunch of questions? Can you give us all your questions?
I have a few questions, yes, I do.
Okay, let's do all the questions first and then we'll answer the ones that we can answer.
Okay, the second question. They used to put a swell in my backyard every year. Every year they did it for so many years. And then they got a pipe down at the end of the road. They came to find the pipe today. They found it the other day though. But I had to go to get the police, the police called the, well, Public Works over to me. So now, now the water came into my, well, it's a different one. This guy put trees over here and then he put a sewer here to take care of the water coming this way and this way. He says it swells, five inch and swells this big, about this deep. So he puts a five-inch pipe in about a couple of years ago. I told the guy, this ain't going to work. We had a few words, we had a few words. Now I got a new guy in there, right? He comes in there, he covers everything up. He's, he, he moves everything and the swell's gone. Everything's not just a pipe, the five-inch pipe, and he can't take it, all right? So now this guy puts, he came from South America. He puts these two lights out there, 18 inches off the curb. Two big lights that go up about six feet, yeah, about six feet. And they're right in front of, when I come out of the driveway, they're right there in front of me. I look and there's two things. It's just make me look from that desk to that desk. Then I got to look at traffic coming this way, which I could see, which I don't see. Then I got to look at traffic coming this way. I'm 80- I'm 87, it's gonna be 87 years old, my wife's gonna be 83. I mean, this is safety that you people should see all the time, it's the big boxes, everybody should see it, the Public Works, anybody can see. But nobody seems like they want to do anything for, they just want to do it for the rich, they don't want to do nothing for the poor in this town. Don't tell me, Mayor, I lived in this town for 85 years. I went to Summit High School, the Summit High School, what is Summit High School? It's not black and white, is it? Never was, right? It was rich and poor, that's what it's all about. You're taking care of your own, that's your problem. I'm in here looking in this room, I'm looking at a space that's a paradise, I've never been in here with people, with nobody I knew, and here we are. But I had enough. Somebody better put a swell through that guy's property, and everything else, and get that water down the hill, because I'm not gonna do it no more. And I'm not gonna do it no more. Because you got a lot of things going on here, that you guys aren't doing, I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm giving you...
So, thank you for your...
I've been fighting here for a year, I walked around this thing here, looking for safety.
Okay, so...
And the lady upstairs says there's no safety.
So, Mr. Ryan, I think the best thing for us to do would be to set up a meeting...
I am hard here.
Sure, I think the best thing to do would be to set up a meeting with you, and I'll give you my card, I'll give you my business card, and we'll set up a meeting, and we'll have the right city staff there, and we'll get, and we'll, and we'll see what we can...
We'll get the police, the summon, with the police, the fire department, and the Public Works.
And I'll ask that you give me a call?
Just four or five, whoever else you gotta bring.
Okay, we'll see who we can bring. Thank you very much, sir.
Don't, don't, I don't need that.
Okay, I'll ask you to have...
I don't need, well, you could thank, we have to do something for me.
Thank you.
Great, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Yes, Mr. Ryan? Sir, I just want to say thank you, thank you for coming tonight. What was your address again? What is your address again?
18 Mount Vernon Avenue. I'm sorry.
That's okay. That's okay, thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan, thank you. Okay. I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna close the public comment period. All right. Public comments are closed, we're on to council member comments and new business. Yes, ma'am?
Council President, if I may?
Please.
On this my last meeting, I would like to express deep gratitude to everyone on this dais, to all of the city staff that I have had the privilege of working with for the almost four years, to the people who have been coming to these meetings and making us better. I have deep gratitude for the privilege of serving Summit. I have joy at this moment with your leadership, that you have provided to this council. Mayor, the leadership that I have watched you do in the eight years that you've been serving, every single council president who has served, I have gratitude that I have had the opportunity to be with you. And Clerk Licatise knows how deeply I feel about her, and law and labor, and how she runs this city with compassion and order, decency and order. And I, I want people to know that it may look easy, and, or it may look like people don't care, or when people disagree, but I can say it is an honor and a privilege to serve this city, and I can't say anything more than I am happy to be going to Chicago to brag about this town, and what we, what we do that is in comparison to a big city, and, and we do it well, and we can always do better, and I just want to express, like I said, the deepest gratitude to the Democrats who helped get me elected, and to the neighbors who would stop me and tell me what was going on, and those who would even tell me when they were mad about something, we do have to listen. And I, I don't want to take up any more time except to say what a privilege it has been to do this. And I'm not going away forever, I am going away for a, what Jerome said, I'm going to college, and, and to really focus on the greater good in society, because that has been my family's history, and, and I do want to continue in that realm, and I thank Summit for pouring into me. Thank you.
Thank you. Other council member comments? Yes?
Super quick. A few months ago, we applied for a state-run municipal energy audit program, and we found out today that our application was approved. So for major buildings in our municipality, the City Hall, the Public Works Building, the library, and the community center, they now have like 13 months of energy usage data that they're going to analyze, and also look at the structures, and give us some valuable feedback. So I'm excited about that, I think it's great that it was approved.
Thank you. Others? Yes?
I just want to say two things, good luck to all the parents this school year, and be sure that you are yielding to children walking, or adults too, in pedestrian, in the walkways. And I want to say, thank you, Susan, I feel as though the work that you're embarking on was literally written for you, and we're gonna miss you on this, on the dais. One thing I do want to say is that in working with you over the last two years, you have a very level hand, and I felt very comfortable being honest with you. You said, you used the word groupthink in a sentence, that you are against groupthink. And I think what's really important when we are on this dais, is that we are seeking to get better every single day, and that starts with the people that we work with on this board, it's the residents that we serve every single day, and you do press in, and thank you for not agreeing with me all the time, and thank you for allowing us to continue to chew on this stuff publicly, privately, however it works, to make sure that we're making the best decisions possible. So I know that you're gonna take that, and you're gonna do great things in Chicago.
Thank you. Others?
Just have a quick one, I just want to echo those statements, Susan, good, best of luck, and thank you. We all, like, as Susan, or as Lisa had said, even when we disagree, I think you're objective, and we always come to a good conclusion, and I love when you say that you are against groupthink, and I just want to wish you the best of luck in Chicago, and to your family. For, my committees will be hopefully releasing some of the Navy drawings in the next, within this month, we just got some new updated renderings. I've made some huge leaps regarding a one homeless veteran, who I met at the Bus Shelter one night at 8:00 PM, and we were able to get him into a hotel, and we actually, he's still there, the hotel's now being covered by Bridges until he goes to AVA Transitional Housing Program, which is excellent, there's not a bed right now, but I feel as a veteran, and as an elected official, I learned so much about this process, that I'm really passionate now, more passionate about helping those homeless veterans than obviously any homeless person, but I do feel, Rich from Bridges and I, I had quite a journey over the last 14 days to learn more about how some of these veterans can really fall through the cracks, and there really is a different path for homeless veterans to exit homelessness, there's just different resources. And he will be on the list for a Section 8 VASH housing voucher, so I just feel like, I hope to share that journey with you, and if you do come across any veterans or, or any homeless individuals, I know Chief Zagorsky, this is actually something I didn't tell you yet, Chief Zagorsky, he had planned to have a meeting with the gentleman from the Bus Shelter tomorrow, but I apparently told him it was today, so I have some making up to do, and hopefully they'll be here tomorrow at 10:00 AM, they were already here today at 10:00 AM, which was my mistake. So hopefully that meeting will be successful, and we can keep helping those individuals. So thank you for all your concern and hard work on that, that's it.
Thank you.
Susan, I just wanted to say thank you for everything you and I have been working together as volunteers in this town for over 20 years, and it's been quite a journey, I've learned a lot from you, and I really, really appreciate it, and I think if I go on, I'm gonna start to get teary, so I'm just gonna say that we'll just stay in touch. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Council President?
Yeah.
So Susan, I may have written something quickly for you, I will not be too long here. So, in my early days as a Summit resident, you were the first person to show me what a public servant can, should be, and could be. You were, you were in so many roles, but the one I remember was initially, was the leader who cared about the direction the city was gonna take. Since that initial impression, you are, you've become my friend, and my neighbor, you were my neighbor the whole time, obviously, but I can tell you, you are somebody who inspires and invigorates other people, which is really endearing. So, I know you're gonna be, people will miss you up here, people will miss you around town, but there's no missing your legacy, because it's not going anywhere, it's here. So, thank you.
All right. That was nice, Marjorie.
Yeah, tough act to follow with all these. So Susan, I, I'm really gonna miss you, you've been sort of part of my whole political journey, when I decided I was gonna run, you and I had a lot of conversations about, about running, about leadership, and I learned a tremendous amount from you, and when I was council president, I could always count on you to, to tell me what you really thought, which, you know, was helpful, and sometimes a little painful, but, but I, you know, again, learned a lot from you, and we, you know, we ran together in 2020, which was interesting, and, you know, it's, it doesn't seem like, you know, like council without you, so I'm going to miss you very much, and we'll have to enjoy being retired from council when you come back.
I just want to leave just one last adjective about you that wasn't mentioned, but it's the word that comes to mind when I think of you, and that's fearless. So, I just want to leave, leave it at that.
Well, I think we'll leave it there, right? Okay, I think at this point we'll entertain a motion to adjourn. And we have a second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
I agree.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, thank you very much.